Leading the order then.
As required by the open public meetings act nineteen twenty five, that notice this meeting was provided on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty one. The publication of notice in the express times and hundred county Democrat and post may have said noticing this on the same date. Mayor Barsoni?
Here.
Mister Baylor?
Here.
Mister Bean?
Here.
Mister Kenyak?
Here.
Mister Dermott?
Here.
Mister Leary?
Here.
And Mister Trenelli?
Here. I'm really pleased to answer the question.
thirty five, United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia, stand, stand, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation. Frank. Come on out. Giving Frank a platform for his years of dedication to township committee. For a pretty much township to Frank Marquette and grateful recognition of your commitment and dedication as a pretty much township commitment in twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one. Pretty much township committee, January twenty twenty two. The township, I'm sure appreciates everything you did. We know you're passionate guy with a lot of these topics and, you know, so we wish you luck.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting from the regular meeting, January twentieth, the special meeting, January twenty ninth. And the executive session minutes from the January, was that from January twenty?
I'm sorry, it's all of twenty twenty.
Executive sessions for both January meetings. Anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Maybe one second. I'll second. Anybody have any questions? Any poll changes, corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenyak?
Yes.
Mister Dermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the treasurer's report in the February bill list. Anybody want to make that notion?
I'll make the motion.
Maybe one second. Second. Anybody have any needful questions, discussion?
Just a small conversation, conversation, comment. Although. I didn't exactly see it on the P O or anything else like that, but just as a point of reference. The cost of that cease and desist letter that we sent over to the new owners of the trucking company, it had cost like fifty six hundred dollars. That was, that's a lot for something that maybe we should have tried a phone call first.
Didn't go back to us.
We don't even know that. We don't even know if it's in the right hands yet. But the problem went away. You know, we, it was a temporary surge over there at their facility and. But anyway, I just wanted to make us aware that that's what that costs.
Anybody else? Roll call please.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the tax collectors taxes early reports for January. Anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make it.
Second. If I have any questions on the report comments. Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Yes.
Police department report. Rich, you want to speak? You just want to submit it as it is or?
I'll just speak just with the public now. So the report, our January calls incidents were one thousand eight hundred eighty one. Last January for seven thirty. Ten arrests. Three hundred thirty four tickets issued, moving violations, seventeen parking violations. Four hundred sixty three warnings. Detective Bureau opened five cases, closed five cases. And it was a busy month.
You see, did I say that they made an arrest for that armed robbery at the gas station from December?
Yes. That. We were working that case. Detective Leisure has done a lot with that case. And yeah, that suspect was just apprehended today.
Yeah, I thought I saw.
It is.
Very good.
With that being said, and it's great work and everything, but he was, that suspect was also suspected of being involved in that shooting in Folsburg.
Yeah, I think there's warrants out for him for that.
Yeah, yeah, he was, he was charged.
He's still on the lam though. He's not caught, that's right.
No, he was just caught.
Was he apprehended Tuesday?
I believe he was just caught today.
Okay, the last I saw.
Yeah, we're still looking for a few other suspects for the armed robbery at the gas station. But I'm pretty confident that Detective Leisure rather than closed out with, with all parties involved. Overtime was a little bit high. We did have. I think with some COVID and some unfortunate passing of some relatives there, so you'll see that.
Then overtime, we keep a track of that. So if we could ever get some of this money, we're going to get paid reimbursed for the COVID for the place, right? We're tracking that.
Yep, I think we're going to put them all in there.
Okay. Anything else, chief?
That's it. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Assisting other agencies, we went from eighteen to two hundred and fifty two. Are they agencies outside of our township?
That could be everything. Let's see.
That's a huge jump, eighteen to two hundred and fifty two.
Yeah, two hundred is the.
Annual, right?
It was the annual for last year.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. All right. So we pretty much doubled. We went from nine to eighteen. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, last year we had eighteen for the month. This year we had nine for the month.
Okay.
Well, you're comparing it against the COVID year too. The year when everybody would, in twenty was when everybody was home.
Right.
Okay. DPW, Joe, you want to speak or just submit?
No.
You're good with what it is? Guys did okay. Good job with all this snow and salt and.
Yeah, we're very fortunate, not as much as we've had last year. But and just a real quick only, the leaf collection program, I'll just state, I gave you a three year run. Two thousand twenty one, six hundred and eleven cubic yards, two thousand twenty, seven hundred and fifty two cubic yards, and two thousand nineteen, four hundred and forty three cubic yards. So it dropped a little bit. Twenty twenty, we know what it was. A lot of people.
They were so, they were the best.
And the Christmas tree collection, we took, they took in a hundred, come out to be about sixteen yards of mulch that's out here in our piles or around our park.
A hundred trees. I'm shocked that there's still that many live trees.
What's that?
I'm shocked.
Yeah, there's still quite a few to collect them out at the curb for the garden companies.
Yeah. And I can't have one. My daughter is very allergic, but I miss them, but I'm still shopping. There doesn't seem like.
Artificial trees come along.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Anybody have any questions to the chief or Joe as we're going through this?
No, and it's just too bad that the shore is so far away. I'd love to take those trees down there because I know they use them for rebuilding dunes and stuff.
Oh, do they?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's big down there. But it's just really challenging to get a little trees down there.
Yeah. Okay, Lisa, you just want to submit your report. You have anything to talk about? And we need to take any action on your stuff?
The first three items need action. The second two were actually on the agenda later, the ordinance amendments, but the first is the zoning and court enforcement officer. I just wanted to formally get the township community's blessing on him adjusting his hours a little bit, which I know we said we would be willing to do. Instead of six to eight P M, he is requesting five thirty to seven thirty with seven thirty to eight thirty being admin hours typically.
You're okay with it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Just thought we should do a vote.
Want to make a motion to approve this?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to adjust our zoning officers' hours from till five thirty to seven thirty.
A second. If we have any questions or comments? Roll call please.
I'm sorry, continue. I have a question, but it's good finish up.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Yes.
Since I deal with zoning officer from time to time, sometimes more than others. How many days? Is it just one day a week?
Still just Tuesday?
Oh, still two? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's similar setup to what it was. Five thirty to seven thirty versus six day, and then he does an hour of administrative.
Okay, so it's the same. I didn't know. Okay.
And obviously whenever he needs to go out, it'll be all on him.
And he also was going to be answering emails remotely and taking phone calls on his cell phone if need be, so it's a little more available. We can work out.
Good.
Cool.
Lisa, if you don't mind, could you give me his, actually his name? And.
I'll send you everything.
Great, perfect, thank you.
So Bob, the only other thing on mine was I did want to just mention that my, the clerk's conference is in March. So just giving everybody heads up, I'll shoot you an email about that. But my registration is free this year because I won the raffle, so it's three hundred and seventy five bucks. So wow, that's a good news. I think that was it.
We don't need to take action on anything else?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think so because it's on, on the agenda later.
Okay. Anything else you want to know? Anybody have any questions? Special release. Okay, and then. Court report. Want to discuss anything on that call or we just?
Uh, no, we're just going to accept it as is and.
Discuss their own budget?
Yeah.
Okay. And A C O report.
We did not receive one again this month. Brian, I think you and I had to get together about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to accept the police department report, D P W report, township clerk report, the court report, and the A C O report. Anybody want to make the motion?
I made the motion.
A second. Anybody have any further questions or discussions on those items? Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
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 Committee reports. Paul, you have anything?
I do. Um. Myself and Frank Pinto both attended the Muskenakon watershed meeting via Zoom on Tuesday night. Um, and I got, I need to communicate with Frank because I think he thinks that's part of his responsibility. And what he does for the township, and that's fine and dandy because I don't plan on making a whole lot of those meetings. For a variety of reasons, but. If this one was particularly of interest, which I'm going to bring. The, the Bloomsbury Headwall Dam. Will not get its final approvals until late two thousand twenty three, which is two years later.
Oh, really?
Than what they told us. And it's a two year project, let alone.
Oh, boy.
So boy, does that push that off. I can't tell you how disappointed I was when I heard that from the D E P. Um, and the engineers and all that good kind of stuff. That whole group. State, the Green Acres people and everything are hoping that, you know, there may be some grant money out there to demolish the building and so on and so forth. Because I told them point straight blank. I said, this, there's no tax dollars that are probably going to be used to raise that building. And it's going to have to come through that. I said, otherwise, I said, I'm going to get all on board again about putting that project up to bid. And if it gets sold to a private company that wants to do something with it, there goes your planning about access and all that other kind of stuff. And even though I was commenting on that, I know that that's probably not going to happen because whoever buys that property now buys half the dam and the head wall. And I'm not thinking anybody with any sense would want to do that, but.
At least they're given access.
Yeah, right, 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 right. So that was that. But what was actually really more disturbing. Is, and I guess it's been a problem in the Pacific Northwest. Um, and maybe a couple of other spots, but the Muskenakon River is being inundated by a New Zealand mud snail. Um, and the reason that's pretty significant is because trout favor eating snails, which again, that was something new that I learned yesterday. I mean, I've been fishing with worms and things and everything else like that. I didn't know I was supposed to be fishing with snails. So I, um, but the problem with this New Zealand mud snail is. Uh, when the trout digest a regular snail, the stomach acids and everything dissolve the meat and it creates the calories and the protein and everything that the fish needs to survive. This New Zealand mud snail has a, a chemical door that covers it. And does not allow these digestive juices to get in there and break up the meat and everything for protein. So these trout are going to think that they're feeding heartily on, and on a side note, one female can produce up to forty million offspring in a three year period of time.
Have you told it snail?
Snails.
Snail.
One step. I, I read two articles. The, the Muskenakon group said it was over three years. I read an article last night on it, if someone is interested, and it says one year. I mean, they're very small and everything else like that, but they will eventually inundate. They've been found as far north as Hampton now. Uh, up there. So they, they're communicating with the state of New Jersey about. We need to get on a program here and it, there's no known predator. No known predator. So what the solution, their solution right now is everybody's got to wash off their boats and their waders and all that good kind of thing. So that they don't carry it to other locales. But it's in the Muskenakon River. It's out in the Pacific Northwest. They are very, very concerned about what it may do to the trout population. Over, you know, and I don't know if it's a ten year, fifty year, or a hundred year thing, but it's a problem. So along with the lantern fly and the stink bug. New Zealand mud snail, we now have something else to argue about.
And they got here helpful.
Uh.
Or they been around like.
They've been around in the Pacific, ballast on boats and things of that nature. There was a variety of ways.
They're from New Zealand?
They're from New Zealand. That's where they came from. So it's just something more for us to dream about and. And with that being said, that's probably why I don't want to go to any more of those meetings. I don't need this kind of stuff. But that was it. I, I went to that and it was interesting and I just thought I'd give a report on that.
Anything else?
That's it. Thanks, Paul.
Brian, you have anything?
Yeah, recreation committee came up with a date for the Easter icon. April ninth, the rain date would be April tenth. The start time would be at eleven. And they're thinking it would end around twelve, but everyone can start gathering around ten A M. And that's going to be at Thomas Stewart.
Thomas Stewart Park.
And it should be contacting you, Joe.
Send me a text just.
Oh, you did? Okay, cool. Nah, and then a second thing would be, I guess, the board of ed as a new member?
Yes, we do. Eric Fuller was appointed at the end of January, so he's our new board member. Also, our superintendent search is well underway. It's coming along nicely. And the budget hearing is going to be March sixteenth. It'll be the public hearing on the budget for next four years.
Will that be on, can you be on Zoom for that or is that going to be live?
Yeah, it's going to be live unless something else happens between now and then.
All right.
Go again.
Yeah. Thanks, Phil.
You good?
Yeah.
Bill, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Professionals report. Mike Trenelli, you have anything?
I know. I don't have much, I don't think. The, the T W A sees later on in the agenda, we'll deal with that then. The, you know, sound like a broken record, I know, but obviously the two D O T grant jobs, you had asked me to, to update our memos and supply you with. An updated memo and cost estimates in advance of your January twenty ninth budget meeting. I, I know we got it to you on a few days before that. And Shannon, you, you got it too, right? On Ricklin Hill Road, section two and Bates Road. Okay. So, you know, they, they stand as submitted with what we need to do. You have time on Bates, theoretically. I think there's a good optional Bates where we chop it in half. Ricklin Hill Road, you got to make the call this year. So I don't know if there's any questions that you have from the memo that you might have or so.
Oh, Joe, you have any? Paul, you have any?
No.
Oh, glad you're on budget.
Yeah, it's budget. Oh, it is. It's good to see Shannon here. I know. Probably something that. It'd be difficult to fit in, but it's a bunch of, bunch of free money. So, uh, and that's really, that's all I got.
Okay, thanks, man.
You're up.
You have any more for executives?
Right?
Yeah.
Are we still looking at the grant for the safe school routes? As I can knock up?
I don't know, because I normally would get a notice about that. No, Brian, I. I mean, if, if it would have came out, it would have clicked in my head, I hope anyway.
Okay.
Uh, so. Put a little note to check with the D O T to see what the.
Wasn't that April, May?
I think so.
Right, you know, George, I, yeah, that very well may be.
Yeah.
I can't recall exactly, but okay.
Yeah, if you get.
If it's something.
Sure.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, old business basketball company, you doing anything on that tonight?
We're going to hold off. Actually, Eric Fuller might have a company that we can use, so we'll get them a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's all we got?
I, I believe paint's going to drive that cost.
Yeah.
Just by what prices I'm getting for field lining paint for the athletic fields.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there's a monster.
I knew that. But I mean, it's continuing. Is that because of the?
Yup, because of shutdowns and not being able to get a certain additive for the paints and stuff like that. I mean, we could always hold off and wait for it to drop. It's fine.
Yeah. Okay. Looking for a motion to adopt resolution twenty nine, twenty two, thirty, twenty two, thirty one, twenty two, and thirty two, twenty two. They're all tax redemption resolutions.
Actually, Bob.
Did we drop the last one?
Yeah, the last one is dropped.
So. So looking for a motion to adopt resolution twenty nine, twenty two, thirty, twenty two, and thirty one, twenty two. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, discussions on them? Roll call.
Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yeah.
Mister Dermott?
Yeah.
Draft words is on the parking issues. Let's go to the first one, reporting in the municipal parking lot. What do we have?
So I think you guys in your packets, Tammy accidentally gave you two different conversions of the same one in your mailboxes yesterday. I gave you the other one.
Oh, well, we make any substantial changes to that? What was?
Essentially, the way the code was written, it said like twelve hours and we wanted to prohibit overnight parking. Which is what we actually, you have it.
So you only change it from twelve hours overnight parking?
Yeah, so you can see the strike.
Anybody have any, want to discuss anything or any comments on it or? Roll forward.
Um. I'll make, um. If it wasn't for the fact that the chances of, of this whole complex, for the exception of the D P W being moved to a new facility. Um. There is parking challenges down here in town. Not horrible, but there are challenges. And I do understand that when residents would use it, it's during bad weather and it does present a small problem to the D P W. I, I would just, I hate to be so restrictive. That we're not going to allow. Overnight parking during snow. And that's the only one I'm commenting on right now. Um, that's just me. I, I don't think there'd be more than a couple of vehicles regardless. Um, I, I just, I personally don't want to be that restrictive.
You don't think?
I don't think we should be going.
I mean, you don't think that if we allowed it, the number of vehicles who want to park there won't increase?
I don't think so because it's never been an issue before.
Well, that, that's true, but my thought is if, if you say it's okay.
Well, I.
Those are saying I park over to miss.
Well, and, and you're right, but the reality of it is, is how many people are going to know that we said it's okay?
Yeah.
The same number of people now.
We've had someone specifically ask.
Right, exactly.
And as long as one on one person knows the secret, everybody will know.
Right.
They're all going to say, I just parked over to miss.
I know that. Again, I don't see it as, as a big red flag.
Well, there's two ways of it. We could, I could agree with you and vote that way, and then we could always address it if it comes to the issue, but does it become an issue and then it takes too long to, to reverse it? I don't know. I mean, I hear what you're saying. I, and I agree. I think you know who's going to be worried too. I just really think it's a very Pandora's box.
Well, the only, my only comment would be when, when and if everybody moves out of the building.
Oh, yeah.
Then, then we.
Then we could all. Well, that's what I'm saying. We're all going to be up there.
Once, once we move.
Not going to be.
Yeah, when we move, I think it'll be fine.
When we move, then it was always said.
Well, you can, but why even go through the motions for what essentially is an eighteenth month period of time if that's the case? That's again, that's just me.
I think that's not the Mr. D P S. An eighteen months. I, I hear what you're saying. And I, 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 I kind of lean with you, thinking you want to be fair and.
Have they looked?
Try to help people out.
Did they, did they call?
I, I couldn't tell you that. I'm not actively trying to pursue conversation with anybody.
And what do you say?
I agree with you that if we let them, they're going to let other people know and then more people. Every single when we move up there.
Well, the only other, well, Joe, you think it'd be an issue for firefighters, just there's people parked there and there has to be a fire, fire at the same.
Well, it'd be the first time we park people in or park in the front lawn.
Well, assuming it's a snow night, they're not going to want to move the car anyway. So, okay, so I'll, I hear that. How about this? Can we do spaces and just reserve? Because like, you do have to worry about the employees coming in. Right, so can we do, I mean, then we got right the law this way, but I guess, but can we do like certain block is reserved for employees?
Our ordinance actually allows for that right now.
It does?
It does.
So we could, we could put signs there, it would be enforceable. Yeah, that would be the issue.
But.
Yeah, if you, if you have an ordinance that says that those are specific spots are reserved.
Because what I'm thinking is. What if they call police in for midnight and by the time they get here, there's no spots? Now, now you have employees complaining, well, I'll go home.
Yeah, and I will, I will tell you, your ordinance now prohibits more than twelve hours of continuous parking. The overnight just makes it cleaner, you know, so that. So you prohibit it now.
I mean, I, I think we got to, if, if we do what you're saying, I think we still have to at least do something with the blocks that the employees can park where Joe's guys.
Wait, we put, put it into a snow situation, you got nine D P W employees that follow snow, nine different vehicles.
Yeah. But that's what, that's what I'm thinking.
No, I, I, I mean, I see your point. I see your points.
So I mean, if, if you could do it where you can reserve a block, make sure they all have parking when they get here. And, well, I guess, and your point is, I, I take your point that it's only a couple, but we're basically trying to accommodate one property owner who's run into a recent issue.
Well, I potentially could see a couple of others that have reoccurring issue also, but yeah.
I'm sure anybody who lives downtown, parking is a pain.
Hey, right. It's a challenge, correct?
Challenge, but it's always been taken care of until now.
Right.
Now, there's a change of circumstance at one property owner who I think was falsely accused of.
Yes.
Of being victimizing.
Yes. Nothing to do with it.
But, uh. You know, I. You know, I mean, that, that's how I look at it.
Right. I, will it hurt to table this for, till the next meeting, so that maybe Joe and I or Joe and somebody?
This one would take effect until, well, there is an order already.
Already in there, right?
Take effect until March and what, yeah.
Yeah, right. Maybe tomorrow or sometime in the near future, we can actually go out and review parking spaces.
Yeah.
And see what works best.
I'm okay with that. Because like you said, this wouldn't take effect until snow season.
Right, right, so.
Okay.
So long as if it's going to go in effect, it'll be in effect by next.
Okay, next one up, I guess, is parking for all times and when the roadway is covered. We have to say.
I, I am all for that. No vehicle should be parked alongside a road during snow cover.
Okay.
The purpose of our, our amendment to this was simply to make it cleaner and easier for Joe and for the chief in enforcement and allowing him to tow them. Because it was in a different section, but Mike Leary has made a change in removing. And allowing him to tow them, because it was in a different section, but, uh, Mike Leary, uh, has made a change in removing. Uh, the first change to.
Already ready to do a first reading on this one, or are we gonna do?
If we can, I think it would be, it would be good to make this one go on.
And I just suggest that we eliminate that first change, because it becomes too subjective. Like, I understand the, the point of it, it's a valid point, but to the extent that parking will not interfere with the normal flow of traffic, and I could just see if somebody gets. A violation, the attorney says, well, they thought it wasn't gonna interfere with the normal flow, even though it's really the. So if you just, yeah, if you just take it out of there, it's not allowed to park in the street during the stuff, you know, it just makes it cleaner for you. Yeah.
No gray area.
Okay, do we have a number for this new words?
Uh, it will, I believe we are at one oh four.
Four twenty-two, right?
Yeah, twenty twenty-two.
Just adopting a whole new one, Mike, or we just, we're just?
Just amended.
Anybody wanna make a motion to adopt? Uh, no, was anyone making motions, introduce order as one oh four, twenty twenty-two amendments to the prohibition of parking during snow, uh, emergencies. Anybody wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Everybody want a second?
I'll second.
Any other further discussion, we discussed a lot already, I guess. Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Engineers service contract. Anybody have any questions, comments, discussions on this, or is anybody wanna make a motion to accept it as is? Guess we should do it that way, anybody wanna make a motion to? Prove the professional service contract for this one engineer.
I'll make that motion.
A second, now, anybody have any questions, comments, discussion on?
No, it's been amended and submitted.
It's a one-year contract.
No.
Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Yes.
Be happy not to see this item one next most agenda.
Okay, uh, we got an application for the school district to use the, uh, pavilion at Thomas Court Park on May twenty-fourth. Was it for an outside dance, I think, right?
Yeah, they're, they're hosting an event.
So I, I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve of their use and waive the fees, this is the school district.
I'll second that, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Bob, before we move on, I was gonna, I didn't have a chance to modify the, uh, the agenda to include, we do have another one from, uh, Booster. And Rec, I think, are working together, I don't know if Brian wants that into this, um, if we could do a motion on the record tonight to waive any fees for them also. Um, that would be great, I think that they're talking about doing like a car show, possibly having food trucks. And it sounds like it's gonna be a bigger event than just, um, something that I can approve the pavilion permit for, so, um, I had.
Yeah, um, I'll make a motion.
And then I think I'm gonna put them in touch with Joe and with the chief so that they can work out, you know, a plan if, if one is needed for traffic and parking.
Well, Rec is us anyway, and then Booster, don't need a lot of back.
Yeah, so Booster submitted, so I thought, I said I would.
School district makes no sense in charging taxes, it comes out of the same line, so, uh, anyway, okay, um. You made a motion, I'll second it, anybody have any questions, comments on? Okay, roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul, did you say you, you think we should, we should table the?
For at least one more month, only because I see activity going on out there with surveyors and such. And even just the current letter from another owner out there.
Yeah, this is the area need a redevelopment, uh. We have to either approve whether we're gonna pay the planner or not. And, uh, there's been some people noted, asking for things, there is some movement, but. I, I just wanna make sure we don't miss the boat, I think it is, try to be tied together in this area when we do it, so I don't. That was one of my concerns, even last month, we discussed about giving up the twenty-two right away there, but that didn't affect it. So, I, I have no problem tableing it, but. As the land use board all started talking about the area redevelopment?
No, sir, they haven't. That's really a, uh, a TC thing that's been put on the planner, not the land use board put on the planner, okay.
Okay, well, I, I, I think for next month, we should at least prepare the topic, cause I, I'd like to try to get something moving on that.
Well, again, if nothing's moving by next month, then sure, absolutely.
Cause it's not just that area.
No, right.
It's all the way up.
There is, there is, there seems to be movement on, on the, on the, the antique stone building down there. Um, Madison property seems to be doing some staking, um, and plus there's been new survey points put in. On the old, what, like, is, is it all Cassius? Yeah, there's, there's been.
I didn't understand any of the state to do that on his property.
Well, there's some, there's been surveyors out there, I'm assuming they're short one, but I've seen them out there, so.
Well, the, the, well, the, the one letter.
Right.
And, uh. I, I don't know how some of this stuff works. Uh, one, I think they're a good business and they're good, cause they're good for greatness, but I think they're gonna have a very clean, good business out there, that's my opinion on them. I think they do a good job, it's always presentable, it always looks nice, I mean, for a car wash, you know, it looks nice, I mean, for a car wash. So, I certainly wouldn't mind working with them, is, is there any way like they could start talking to the land use board?
This is the first day that we've actually seen something truly formally written, um, and I'm not sure. I, I saw that, I read it over, I don't know who's, who's actually going to, to be talking about. Does TC refer to the land use, because I mean, the bottom line is, it's, it's, uh, the cul-de-sac that the town owns.
Yeah.
Uh, and they're in compliance with the zoning and, and the land use out there with the car wash. So I don't know that it falls into the land use at all, um, maybe Mike could shed some light on that.
I think, before we sold it, we'd like to know what they're gonna change and what's it gonna.
Well, I, no, I think they have all intentions.
I think they're very, very good business operators, I assume it's gonna be nice. Speaking of the letter to Kevin today?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I may, I actually, you know, I'm, I'm the only one that has the ability to do this, and maybe after the meeting, I got, I have a.
Blow-up plan than?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's the plan that came today. That's why I'm saying this may prove helpful to you to really understand what they're doing, because. I, I looked at it on my computer and I really couldn't tell, but you can, so.
I don't understand this letter then, I, the letter kinda looked like you never got a response from us, and it, when I sent it.
Yeah, we've had a number of conversations about it, I think this is a different piece, it's like on the other side, but I was always the cul-de-sac, but. I'd explain to them that, listen, if it's an undersized, cause the piece that we have been talking about is undersized, so. The, the question was, I talked to Don Souters and said, you gotta check with the mall owner, cause the committee, we're gonna have to offer it to both sides. They want it, and then he said, yeah, the mall's interested in it, so.
No, the mall is interested in it, they've reached out to me, they're also.
Like, this is the piece on the other side, but I always thought, when I've got the letter, I'm like, well, we've talked about this a million times, but apparently it's the other side.
Right, okay.
But it would be, the same principle would apply, if it's an undersized piece of property, we have to offer it to both sides, I don't know if.
Okay.
See, or, or we just vacate.
But that, that's my.
Or vacate the road.
Before you did. I'd wanna say to the planner.
Right.
If we sold either piece of this property, is it gonna interfere with what you made? Prepare for, is that, see where I'm going with it? New facility update. Joe, what are we gonna have, I, now I saw your email today, but I get a chance to read it real close.
Yep, that, uh, there's a PDF drawing of it.
Yeah.
Blares, and then there's three hard copies, Chief Hummer has one, one for the committee to look over.
Yeah.
And, uh, one for the fire department, uh, the plan is, take a look at it, and I suggest to write down what we like, what we don't like. And then we'll set up a meeting with the architect and hash out from there, and.
You already sent this to your engineers or architect to start looking?
Doing a poll. Fire company chief, um, Denny Sowers, the fire company hired him to, to develop the plan and, uh. Draw our technical specs for the buildings. The space step one.
Who's the architect?
Benny Sowers. Where's he from, around Harrisburg area?
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, so, we don't really have anything more to discuss.
No, but we should really schedule a, a meeting, a meeting with us.
Yeah.
Uh, it's. If we think it's longer than eighteen months, sooner the better.
Department heads.
Yeah.
Uh, chief, uh, uh, chief, chief, and the two of us again, okay?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll have Troy Roche, your president of fire company also.
You gonna represent all the offices up there?
Shannon's trying to get a bigger office than me.
Okay, so, should we send out an email with some dates and we'll pick one, okay, thanks. Okay. I guess we don't really have any choice but to group this TWA application. Right, but.
Well.
Saying that.
Extreme statement, but we have a choice.
So, uh, can you just explain what it's all about, so it's on the record, and if folks here know what a TWA is? And what we're voting on?
Okay. The, uh. The applicant through their, uh, Willow's, you know, Ingraham, Willow's Greenwich Development, the Affordable Development upon Greenwich Street. And Dumont, um, is requesting the township endorse and sign their TWA application. For their sewer main, it's just the standard, uh, DEP permit is required when you're extending a sewer main. Okay, um, and there's two different parts, uh, to this, because of the change in ownership of the main. There's their piece on their property, if you will, and then there's our, or the. The balance of the main, which the township has agreed to, uh, accept ownership and maintenance responsibility is basically up Greenwich Street. Okay, uh, there's signatures required, there's a resolution that's required to be adopted. And after that gets obviously administratively taken care of by, by, between Lisa and Bob. It would go back to, um, Ingraham's engineer, who's kind of handling this. For submittal to Phillipsburg, because we are just the conveyance, uh. Part of the equation, they are the treatment part of the equation. So, they, they need to get the Greenwich endorsement first, and then it will go to Phillipsburg for Phillipsburg's endorsement. So, that's, and there's a, a bunch of places to sign, we tried to tab it and make it nice and got it. Excellent, good job, Lisa, um.
Do we have a resolution number or something?
Yeah, thirty-two, twenty-two.
Yeah, and then we've been, uh, John Drill and I have been in contact, and of course, we. We already did a review months ago, sent it in, they made, made some changes and whatever, so we've. We're recommending, uh, that you move forward and, and sign and execute.
That's the only action I think is the resolution?
Correct.
So I'm looking for.
Excuse me, Bob, I would think unless the resolution in itself. Authorizes for the signatures, cause I was gonna say, okay, well then, just the resolution.
So looking for a motion to adopt resolution number thirty-two, twenty-two, which is basically approving the. TWA application for the Ingraham property on Dumont and that.
I'll make that motion.
Anyway, want a second? I'll second. Any other questions, comments, discussions on it?
I just have one question, Mike, uh, how close are we to, um, I know it's not part of this, uh, for them to, uh, break ground? They wanted to try it in March, April. I, I just, last time I was on, I spoke to them.
I think Mister Baylor might have it on stage, I, I don't.
Last week, he said summer.
Who'd you speak with, Brian?
Yeah.
You're definitely. Okay, did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard it, thanks.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Lisa, I'll just send the dynamic guy, just a quick email and just tell him that it was done tonight and so forth, did the array make arrangements to?
It's in the mail for tomorrow morning, it's already in the outgoing.
Oh.
And he's aware of that.
Okay, well then I'll say nothing.
Rave mobile safety.
Yeah, um, rave mobile safety is Bill Hunt and Steve Howe from Warren County Public Safety came down. Got in touch with me as OEM coordinator, this is the new, um. Warning system that's gonna replace, is replaced or has replaced, uh, what was that, ready? Something ready, the system that the town, uh, register ready, or something like that. And what this system does, will send out phone notifications, the county has, uh. Be able to send out for the county, this is all part of requirements, and I believe there's no cost to the county. No cost to municipality, cause I believe Merrill Creek Reservoir is, is providing this, this is part of their. Warning system, so everybody that was in the, uh, register ready system has already been transferred. But you put cell phone numbers and it has all the landlines, and they can send out a. Pipe in a message, and it'll send out that message as a voice message over landlines and your cell phones and or text messages. So if your cell phones aren't registered, you should get them registered, the, what I'm bringing it up here for is. The, uh, the, uh, old system had a limit of how many. Calls they can make out onto it, this is unlimited, so they're handing off. Townships in Warren County have the opportunity to use this. For any need message they wanna get out to the town residents, right down to. Community Day is set for September, blah, 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 blah. This is something that I know for the last four or five years, uh, talked about how to communicate with the public. So forth and so on, this is a way, and what I did have them do, Chief Hummer was there since he stepped the OEM. And I also had Lisa added to, as the group that's able to insert messages. And distribute them, and they showed, they came down and showed us, we could, we could get right down to. Sending a message out, that, if there's a police activity in a section of town to. Six houses surrounding the suspected house of the, uh, police, what they need. Or a section of town, areas that flood, anything like that, and there's nothing more to go on the computer. Draw out your parameters, but I, once, once we're all up and ready to go, I think we need to put a little bit of. Advertisement out there when we send out our, uh. Something in there where the people can register their cell phones and things like that. Because your cell phones definitely have to be registered in this area. Landlines, they can force a message through, because it's not moving and it's not dedicated.
Okay. We have to do anything on this?
No, we don't have to do anything, it's just, this is one of them informational things, and like I said, even, even down to.
When can they start putting numbers on?
I'm waiting, I'm waiting to hear.
Put it on the website long before we send that.
Yeah, I'm waiting. Get some, like, some, what kind of advertising information we can get on it to push out.
I think somewhere that's worthwhile, send it home to the school district if you could do it.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Churches and stuff, they can put in the back, so like maybe something we're leaving. They have bulletins or whatever, we can think, we can put it with that, so, wouldn't get a lot out before, before all.
It'll be a great communication.
You mentioned Merrill Creek.
Point like even the, the snowstorms, when we did emergency proclamation. That can, we could put that out over there, I know we put it on.
Yeah.
Facebook, we put it on the website and stuff, but there's only a certain amount of people, we could send out a message. That Greenwich Township's in the snow emergency proclamation.
Oh, yeah. I think, I think it's great. We've been looking for that for years, Paul, you've had it on under your own business? We've been looking for that for years, Paul. You've had an owned, under-owned business for three years, ain't you?
Yeah, yeah.
You mentioned Merrill Creek, which. Resident asked me about Merrill Creek. They said, you know, when they first built, we had the sirens, you know, except they went to the phones.
This gentleman called, I talked to him, who you're talking about.
I said, I'm sure so, Joe Mexi will have the answer.
I called, talked to him for about twenty minutes. He wasn't pleased, but I, I said, that's the system they're using now.
Although he was worried, worried too about who does the inspections on a dam to make sure it's not gonna fail.
I I told him, we'd say since COVID, but what people really don't know, Merrill Creek by law has to do a tabletop annually. And I participated in it, and they knew the scenario, and. I don't know.
He wants to know who watches the physical structure.
There is seismic sensors all in that dam that they take readings all the time. And they, and they, they constantly monitor and stuff, uh, and it's the same way with Yards Creek. And there's people from, there is a, New Jersey has what's called, uh, I don't know if I have the right word. A dam board or an organization that that's all they do. Well, they probably get the other one. And they have people there at this.
Did they ask you that question too, though? Did you explain that to them, about all the seismic uh. Monitoring and stuff that goes on?
Yeah, I told them there's seismic there. No, absolutely. I says that there's just not sitting there with binoculars looking for water starting to run out. From the, out of the front wall and stuff. There's seismic sensors and stuff.
Okay, Joe, actually, I, just one quick question, and you may not know the answer, because I've never given it a minute of thought. Uh, because Merrill Creek has always been the the damage. If Yards Creek let loose, are we in trouble?
No.
Okay. I'm just, hey, I'm worried about it all the time between snails.
Because that, I think they said that'll affect Delaware River.
Okay, alright.
What about the Loews Hollow side? That's where a dam, that class is where.
Oh, yeah, we're.
Lo- Loews Hollow is uh.
That's right down Merrill, right through.
Right down through here.
They said a fifty-foot tall wall of water all the way to Trent.
That's a total terrorist attack.
Yeah, right.
But the new location, if we build up there, will will be a beachfront.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion. We accept new members to the Storchville Fire Company. Jake Schmitz is a cadet firefighter and Paul Holterjohn is for the Fire Police. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, discussion on that? Roll call is now.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Keny?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the blue light permits for Kristen Mexi. That's a renewal for the blue light and also Elijah for his initial uh, application. Anybody want a second? Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Keny?
Yes.
Yes.
Correspondence. We have, we have a thank you letter from the uh. Gordon's family. We're in Coker, the tax lately passed away. He was a longtime employee of the township. We sent a flower arrangement that we write. They thanked us and then uh. We discussed the memo, was that?
No, that was the committee had directed to send that letter, so we sent the letter saying we didn't have any objection to that.
Okay. Public comment. I make a motion. We open the floor for public comment. Anybody want a second? All favor.
I was looking at the agenda online, because before we come, we kind of like to know what you might be discussing. And I noticed there's a number of acronyms in the agenda. And so I went to Google attempting to find out what the acronyms meant. And I have to say, A I N R, I have four definitions, none of which are appropriate. And so I just wondered if, when it comes up, if you might put a forens and then just put what that means. Because I just was floundering there and figured I'm way off base on this.
That was the area that needed redevelopment, we're talking about.
Neuroretopathy. And the association of independent nursery retailers, none of which. Yes, so that would just be, yeah, and and it's such a petty thing, but it would be nice to know.
After all these years, you're just, yeah, it's just.
You all know, and it's just, um, we didn't.
Well, it's funny you say it, because when you first get it all committee and you do get your agenda, sometimes you're like, what is that? But then it does become like second.
Yes, and I'm sure it does, because you go over and over these terms. The other question we had is, I think, Mayor, you were going to try to meet with some mayors. Or committee people from other townships to see what might be done or how things might work with the truck traffic. And I just wondered if there was a meeting or if there were any results from that conversation.
Okay, I'll do that when we close.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up? I'll make motion to close public comment. All favor. So I did attend. We guys at the last, oh, we were Zoom last time. I did attend. It was, uh, I was there, the mayor of, uh, Little Paco was there. County, one of the county commissioners was there, county administrator was there. Oh, and the county engineer, one of the, somebody from the engineer's office was there, and uh. What they basically want to do is try to get together as a region down here and make applications to DOT. As a region for funding, rather than Greenwich going and saying, we need it and stuff. So the next step is, I just saw the county commissioner last week, Cecil. She told me she's still working on it. We're trying to get a meeting with Senator Dougherty, Senator Peterson, and Senator Mayo. To help them get in, us get in contact with DOT and figure out where to go from there, so. I, you know, so it's, it's gonna be a slow, long process, obviously, but but that's where they want to go. Next meeting, we're hoping to try to get Powhatan and Alfa uh, involved and maybe even go towards Harmony or Franklin if they need to be for this region. Eventually, I think they're gonna have to do something on order too, but uh. That's what they want to do. They want to try to pull the municipalities together and apply as a block. Not power, you know, strengthen them, number steering, I guess, so, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I guess that's it. We're gonna make a motion to go into executive session, discuss contracts for the chief of police to state health benefits plan and the land lease in Wyndham Farm. And if we're discussing?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I'll make the motion, we go into executive session. Anybody want a second?
Second.
All favor. Enjoy your night.